We're ready.
Sheri Oram, Barbieri.
Here.
Bryce Sherratt, Shelton. Erin DeCuyer.
Here.
Brett Hales.
Here.
Emily Gray.
Here.
Keith Sudbury.
You.
Number two. Matt Holton.
Here.
Nick Sudbury.
Here.
Patrick Schaefer. Robert Niall.
Here.
Sherry Orman.
Here.
Jessica Sister.
Here.
Okay, thank you Katrina. We have business to take care of first.
Just so you know.
Okay. Hi Lauren. I did, I'm so sorry, I didn't understand that.
I just said I didn't hear my name called, so I just want to make sure you knew I was here.
Oh, okay, thank you my friend. We're gonna have office for a new board member, Matt Holton, who is online. Katrina? Hi Matt.
Hi there, sorry that I can't be there in person. I was hoping to, but let me know how I can best do this remotely.
Will you ready to write a text and repeat after me?
Okay, it's gonna be harder, it's gonna be hard to repeat, because I can barely hear you.
Monica here.
Is that your thing? Okay, how's that?
Better.
Okay, good. Okay, I'm Matt Holton.
I'm Matt Holton.
Having been appointed to the office of?
Having been appointed to the office of?
Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District.
Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District.
Board of Trustees.
Board of Trustees.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks.
Welcome board, glad to have you. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. If anybody has any comments regarding the meeting, or excuse me, regarding the minutes from February twenty sixth, or if not, I'll take a motion. Make those two positions that I have written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sherry Orman, a second by Nick Sudbury. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, that motion passes. We'll go ahead and open the meeting for public comments, if there's any one here that would like to speak publicly. Alright, seeing that there are none, we'll go ahead and close the open public forum meeting at the moment. And if you understood that sentence, you're better. One business item, this is a follow-up item, it's Momentum Food Waste Collection Program. And Cam, I'm gonna turn that over to you, this will be kind of fun to get an update.
Yeah, thank you. So I want to, if I can, John and Leanne, wonderful chairs over here by Maryelle and Mary Jo, if you understand, bring your bucket. Thank you, yeah. John, and Leanne, would you mind just introducing yourself to?
Absolutely. I'm John Lehrer, President of Matt's Food Waste.
Our residential customers deserve a little bit.
And we want to talk to you today about our food waste program. The Ann will go through the details, but we've got a bit of a history with this, we've been doing a pilot for some time and we're expanding it. We've been doing this in Salt Lake for a while, and we're expanding here in the district with your permission, of course. So that's what we're here to talk to you about. Turn it over to Leanne.
Yes, yes, please. So people can sign up online, there are two different container types, there is a four gallon bucket and a sixteen gallon cart. And as you can see, we are flipping over to a five gallon, or bucket rather, and it has our Momentum logo on it, and a twist-off lid. Some of our customers had a expressed interest in having a different top on it, they had a little trouble taking off the lid, so we've heard them. And we are gonna be adding this new five gallon bucket. Once people sign up online, they will get a caddy and a roll of bags, or thirty bags on a roll. Not free when you sign up. And if you want to order more bags, you can do that as well on our website. We also have a subscription now, for bags, so customers can go on there, sign up for the subscription, and then monthly we will give you a roll of bags.
I have a question about the bags, quickly, that's why I'm gray mode, or, because I mean, like, our recycling thing, we can go back, and so this is different, so tell me about your bags.
Yeah, so we have highly degradable bags that are accepted by the digester, where we take our food waste. Because they're more of a clear, once you open them up, you can see the food waste in them. And these are the type of bags that the digester will accept, because they can see the food waste in there. If a garbage bag was to be used, and they cannot see food waste in there, they will actually take almost the whole truckload and make it come, dispose it up instead of...
No, I'm getting complicated, Mark. So I can see, you know, a lot of my grocery bags, can you use those?
No. These bags can tear kind of easily, there's so much porridge on it, so it's easier for them to get rid through the digester, better than the, you know, plastic bags that you'd have at a grocery store.
Leanne referring to the digester, should we cover that for a second?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're great. And just jump in with questions anytime, this is great. I want to make sure you understand completely what's happening. So there's a facility that was constructed probably about four years ago or so, it opened in North Salt Lake, Wasatch Resource Recovery. It's a public-private partnership between the South Davis Water Treatment Facility and a private entity, I mean, it's essentially older construction, I think they go by a different name, but partnership. But anyway, Wasatch Resource Recovery accepts food waste from a variety of sources, industrial, so they, I don't know, way from the Dan and Yogurt Plant, for example. It accepts food waste from commercial operations, restaurants and whatnot. And with our partnership with them, they've been accepting food waste from residents. They came to us with the idea of doing a pilot for residential food waste, oh, probably twenty twenty-one, and that pilot was very successful. Because of kind of post-COVID realities, with being able to expand our fleet and hire drivers and whatnot, we were slow to move out of the pilot phase. But starting last year, we were able to finally do that. But so, yeah, so the digester accepts food waste from all these different sources. It goes into their digester, they're like giant artificial stomachs, basically, they've got little enzymes in there that break down the food waste, and the main output from this process is methane, which they then, they use the word condition, they also use the word scrub, but essentially, they prepare this methane so that it can be sold directly to Dominion, it goes directly into the Dominion pipelines, and is then distributed through the Dominion Network. There's also a small, solid product left over after all the BTU value has been extracted through the enzyme process, and that's distributed as fertilizer. So that's what Wasatch Resource Recovery does, what the digester does. And so all the food that we collect through these programs, we go into the digester, and the digester, we work with them closely to select these bags, because we don't want, and it's a very sensitive environment in there, things that get into the digestion shouldn't be in there, it's got all these enzymes and ruins our process. So we collaborated with them very carefully in how to get the food waste from the buckets into the food waste. Hopefully that helps.
And so our food waste zone is weekly on Wednesdays, and we're gonna add two more zones, and they're gonna be on Tuesday. So those are the current zones, you'll see the sugar zone is near here. And being added, part of Salt Lake City humans, and you'll be on the next slide, the two new zones. So the two new zones are gonna be in Bill Creek, part of that Sugar House area up there, right there. And then, and the other one is going to be in Mount Olympus, in the holidays, and they'll be on Tuesdays. We've had a lot of interest in those areas. And actually, two people from Mount Olympus already signed up, thinking that we were already there, so that's exciting. So we had a hundred and twenty-one participants right now in TR and EM's food waste zones, that current food waste zone.
Current food waste zone.
Yes, yep. And then overall, we have five hundred and seventy-three customers, that is up from the last time you may have heard about our program. We went up by seventy, because we expanded our avenue food waste zone, just a little up north. We had a lot of interest there, so we expanded there. And we currently have four hundred and forty-nine customers with the four gallon buckets, and a hundred and twenty-four with the sixteen gallons.
I'll point out that the sixteen gallon cart actually comes out of the fault bottom, it doesn't go all the way down to the wheel, it only goes up to the top weight point. So when you take the bag out of your caddy, and you put them in the purple cart, it's probably twice the size of the bucket capacity, but it doesn't go all the way to the bottom, it's just easier for the truck to tip the bin.
Oh, good, because it looks terribly, I make the comment every time, how can you be wasting fifteen gallons of food every day?
It's surprising, every household has different needs, stomach, you know, one, you only find one bag in their bucket every week, and another household, you know, they've got a couple of buckets, or fill up the entire business, every household's different.
And if anyone wants to upgrade from the four gallon bucket to the, or the five gallon, to the sixteen gallon cart, they can do that. A lot of people will start with that four gallon or now five gallon bucket, just to see kind of, you know, how much food waste they're going through, and they find that they're going through a lot more than they thought, so then they upgrade to that sixteen gallon cart. So you'll see that we have, we have a lot of active glass customers, total of one thousand nine hundred and eleven. And in each zone, there are some food waste interests, so there's a hundred and fifty-three food waste interests across the board. That's how we kind of are deciding where we're gonna go next with our food waste expansion.
And these are unsolicited expressions of interest, we haven't done any promotion of any sort, these are just people that have come to our website, filled out a form, saying, hey, I'd love for you to own in my neighborhood, I heard you're doing this elsewhere, you know, unsolicited, but we're pretty confident that there's gonna be a pair of them.
Yeah, and there's customers that will tell their neighbor and like, they're so interested. So that's, some of that is from other customers that have been interested, and they'll tell their neighbors that they're interested.
Can I ask you a quick question about Cottonwood Heights? I just saw that it says CH1, CH2, CH3. Is that breaking the entire city into your own three districts, or can you explain that?
Yeah, so those are our zones, for us to kind of split out what makes most sense for our driving and all that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, it has a number of households that we can service with one truck in one day. So we break up the zones so that we can accomplish that. And as the subscriber base increases, we split the zones even further. So as there's more density, you know, in Cottonwood Heights, I mean, I could easily see that going to five or six zones at some point over the future. So it's just a, we can do per truck per day.
Thanks so much.
Sure, thank you, good question.
So when are you looking to add these additional districts in Cottonwood Heights? Well, we can do it as soon as next week even, we've just got any full one bucket, so more bags, so we're prepared to take it on.
One other thing we should touch upon is how we're going to let people know about the service. We have a team of outreach specialists, and they'll do events at, they'll set up a table at the grocery store or the coffee shop, and just hand out information to people that might be interested. They also will go around to select neighborhoods throughout the whole summer, and they'll hang door hangers.
Let me grab a door hanger.
Oh, great, yeah. They'll hang door hangers on people's doors, letting them know that it's available. So there's an outreach component of this, probably in the next two to three weeks is our rough plan. So, very soon.
So this is kind of example of what the door hanger will look like. I know that you might have been sent one from Megan, so this is kind of similar to that one, we don't have it printed yet, but I don't know if any of those...
The ones we're doing, the ones we're printing for this expansion, of course, have Wasatch Front partnership on there, and how to find out, again, we can send it around, but it's not been printed.
It's in the package.
Oh, great.
Do you guys have any statistics on weight, volume that you've collected from the customer base that you have so far?
We do, but we aren't prepared to say too much.
Doesn't matter, yes.
I think it'd be great to have that come in for, you know, maybe even quarterly for us, to kind of see, because I know that Pam puts those numbers together, or somebody else.
We do share all the collection data, glass programs, weights and whatnot, every quarter with Pam.
I think a lot of people would probably be surprised how much food waste compared to, you know, the reduction to the trash, because I know that I've seen a lot of companies out there, like in California, doing something similar, but they've got like a food dehydrator that they do, and then they, then they show... One that you guys are doing, but I think it'd be awesome to see those numbers.
I think you're right, I mean, the waste characterization studies generally show food waste can be forty to fifty percent of the total waste, but I think people generally are surprised at how much they do.
Just really curious, when it comes to landfill, does it help break down the other garbage that is put in the landfill when food waste is in the landfill with it?
I've not heard that, but certainly it will break down in the landfill, and it will, you know, release the same gases and whatnot, and some landfills are equipped to capture those and some are not. The ones that are, I don't think any, I'm not a landfill expert, my understanding is that they don't capture a hundred percent of it, even if they are equipped, and you're probably better able to speak to this.
Both landfills do have the gas, generate the power, and there's six thousand homes in Murray City, actually. As far as what percentage they capture, I wouldn't be able to, you're right.
But to your specific question, I have not heard anything about how the presence of food waste in the landfill helps break down other products.
Well, that's from my elementary school days.
I'm not dating, I'm not that.
The consumer, obviously very helpful to have it the same day as your other pickup, but does that cause a problem with having too many different trucks in the neighborhood, that's all coming on the same?
Yeah, it could, and then the other thought is, their route system is gonna be a lot different than ours because of our economy and scale, we have so many more homes, and this is strictly subscription, so it would be different, yeah, for their economy and scale.
We do collaborate closely, so when we can avoid being on the same street on the same day, we'll do that. But sometimes it happens anyway. Oh, the other thing that we didn't talk about is, for those of you who are familiar with our glass program, you know that we have a reminder system. So when you sign up for an account with us, when a customer enrolls with us, they can sign up for an automatic reminder, and that can be their choice, either text, or email, or even an automated phone call if they prefer. And they can pick, you know, whether they want that to be the night before, or a whole day before, and they can mix and match that, so like in my house, I might want to have it be a text, but my wife might want to have it be email, or whatever. So because it can get confusing, since we're not on the same schedule as their normal food recycling services, we make sure everybody is in this reminder system, so they know, you know, when it's time to put their food waste in their glass.
And they love their reminders.
I wouldn't need it, I need that for my garbage. And I'm like, oh, this is the guy, do you?
Well, no, but...
I'm out giving all my drinking free.
Really curious, you have an image here of one of your pickup trucks, is this the size of each truck that comes through the neighborhood?
Uh, no, this is one of our glass collection trucks, and in fact, even in the glass collection world, we're moving away from these larger trucks, to some smaller footprint trucks. They're still very large, usually pickup trucks with built bodies in the back, so they're not small by any means, but they're not just large. And the newest ones, we're C and G as well, so efficient, more environmentally friendly.
They run on lettuce and tomatoes?
Well, it's got a nice amount of natural gas that's helping to create something to that.
Well, thank you. Yes, thanks, really appreciate that.
I appreciate your consideration, thank you.
I'll shut it out.
Okay, request approval to reallocate or reclassify two part-time customer service representatives' positions to one customer service representative, full-time equivalent. Cam, you've got this?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Renee help out as well as I go. They'll do the introduction, our customer service unit and our team has four full-time positions and two part-time positions, that have been in existence for about twenty-six years. Prior to that, there were three full-time customer service reps and two part-time. Over the years, I mean, we've added homes, as you all know, we've added developers and so forth. The customer service unit, with Renee's position being newer in twenty twenty-one, Renee's role was to take on administrative functions that are within my purview. And then as we've gone along, and we looked at operations, and then, you know, the workflows that were distributed within the pickup, these are operations, we're sitting right behind our board chair. And Renee coming in with the new position, we want to try to balance these workflows. So like I said, we've added drivers over the years, with the workflows for the operations has increased. And can you hear me online?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right on, thank you. So at any rate, Renee coming in, she did an evaluation of the resources that are available, and you want to recognize Yale Johnson, he is our customer service manager, sitting right back here. He's part of the team and does a great job getting our customer service reps trained and providing the support, along with Renee. So the current analysis that's in front of you, Renee went in and looked at, did a deep dive of what the workflow did entail. And then, you know, we looked at the hours that are available for the customer service representatives, you look at a year worth of time, so one FTE is twenty, eighty hours. But then you have to deduct holidays, where we're not working, vacation and sick leave, and we did a very conservative, sixty hours per year for each representative to have a vacation, and twenty hours for sick leave, and then of course, the hundred and four hours for the holiday. So that's how we got the hours for the FTE, five FTE, nine thousand three hundred and eighty. Understanding that right now, Yellen and Renee feel like the magic number is five, so in theory, we would have five, other than we can't recruit and retain two part-time people. It's just not a desire for people to come in part-time. We noticed that since COVID, it really did affect, previously, you could have folks that were retired and wanted to have a little more income, but that's not the case anymore. And that's why we're asking for an FTE to reallocate that. And then Renee, do you want to kick off with cost, because you looked at the cost difference, and we'll get Paul on this as well, to come up with the increased cost?
Yeah, so what Paul and I looked at, well, the full load is off the line, so that's what's been catching benefits, we're looking at the huge benefit, we're getting it, right? So the full year cost of having an FTE versus of having the two part-time employees would be about twenty thousand dollars. And if we proliated it, if you guys gave us an approval, starting April first, it would cost us fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars for this year. One thing I wanted to note is, as we've been struggling with trying to get the two-part timer on board, we train them, we get them on, and then they leave us, and then you'll have to train them again and get them on, and think about the cost of our customer service managers taking, you know, fulfilling that role, which is then, you know, handling with all, which is still wanting to do that. We estimate about twenty to twenty-five percent is still good, because it's very, very easy in staying with what our customers are experiencing, our customers, the agents are creating. But when you're fulfilling that role for some percentage of the time, that's an additional cost, essentially, we're paying for. So we just, you know, Neil was like, can we look at this? And I was like, yes, let's look at this. So essentially, we're like, if you get a full time fully on, is it worth that fifteen thousand dollars for the two thousand dollars cost for the benefits, for the benefits for the rest of the year, versus spending all that additional, you know, training, you know, for the purpose of the...
Yeah, perfect, yeah, thank you. And then, you know, looking at the turnover cost, right, so even though I estimated eighty thousand a year, it's so steep, but think about a loss for the productivity. There's a big loss for the activity, as Renee described, where we would have our HR manager trying to recruit, retain Yale's time, and then also Renee's as well, so there is a loss of the productivity, even though it's a fixed cost. So we are asking for approval to reallocate those two part-time, it is an increased cost, we can absorb that. Right now, we've been under staff in our equipment operator position, or we're still a little under staff, even though we hired three today, they've started, yeah, so we only have two vacancies right now, we're very thankful. So anyway, just to reiterate, we can... Questions?
Question, comment, stop?
It's key, it's a great idea.
Happy to support.
Yeah, thank you.
Even the impact to customers. In this, the lack of knowledge, things like that, we can't remember. So there's, you can't maybe quantify the number there, but there is a cost, and then, bring and retrieve.
Yeah, so we will need an approval on this. Now I'll take a motion.
Motion to vote the, I'll change the pass by two part-time customers, for certain, one customer representative, so we'll go in.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Alright, that motion passes, thank you Cam. I hope that makes it easier for customer service.
Big smile from Yale.
Yeah, I did too. And I think Sherry has a really good point, when customers call in, and it's constantly someone new, it's like, hold on, hold on, or they get the wrong information. So I think making that customer service more efficient, more accurate is a great idea, and I think that will serve us well. Request approval for reclassification in the updated twenty twenty-four case count. Cam, I'll let you have this up.
Thanks, I'll take it off, and then I'll turn the thing over to Hazel and Melissa, and Paul for his financial information, or anything else you might want to add. So just to introduce that, as we have evolved as organization, it's been necessary to go back and look at job descriptions, and we've done this in the past ten years, we've just had re evolve, we rewrite job descriptions. If there's any need for a reclassification, or what that threshold means, is that a significant content change in job descriptions. in job responsibilities would be what tips the sale, doesn't have a reclassification of a job. So for example, um, I've been working with David Ikar, our operations manager, and we've had new positions that have come in, our safety, our, the experience coordinator, that was like when David spoke, the customer service was Renee. Um, and so it's really getting to the nitty-gritty for planning and goals and so forth. That's really where we need David's focus and helping with the men, uh, excuse me, the three managers that are under his work, urgency for operations. And, uh, so we've written, rewritten David's job, but his needs that threshold for reclass. And so those really also continue to do this process. This particular, um, job is, is customer account coordinator. Um, and looking at several significant changes, and I do want to shout out to Matt Ferguson, who's our consultant. Um, he is Ken Simmons, direct team manager, and does a great job in looking and analyzing at what his people are doing and does the job description meet where they're at. Uh, and he has clarified in case it was, there were substantial changes. And so the next step is when I see that, Hazel is involved in this process along the way. And when we see the need, we will engage with our compensation consultant to take a look at it, to make sure that it really does meet that threshold for reclass. And in this case, it did. Um, and then Melissa is online. She's our, uh, compensation consultant. And, um, Hazel, do you mind if I tip it over to you and, and to Melissa?
Yeah, I did say before we talked to Melissa, but I'm really grateful to David to work with the compensation consultant. Um, and I've learned a lot in the short time that I've been here, working with her. Um, I, I really appreciate her, her methodology. And, um, it's, it's great, it's great to employ fairly and consistently. Really, I've never seen that, that kind of consistency before. So Melissa, I'll just turn the time over to you to explain this situation that we're going in right now.
All right, thanks. So I'm so sorry I can't be in person today, but I appreciate being online today to kind of go over, uh, what Pam asked me to talk about. Um, just because there are a lot of new board members, is what is the process when a position is reclassified? And, um, what do we do as far as, as what Hazel just talked about, keeping the position in line with what we've done with, with other positions? And making sure that we treat it in a fair and consistent process with other positions. And so in this case, um, what I do is they send me the revised job description after they've worked on it. And they also, in this case, sent me, um, the incumbent, uh, created a spreadsheet of, of the percentage of time that he was doing in all of the areas that are identified in the job description. And I look at that compared to what the current job description looks, looks at. And I determine if there, if there appears to be an additional significant amount of duties or a change of the job description. And in this case, there were. Um, this position is kind of, um, led into where he was really just kind of working on, uh, the billings and making sure they were going out correctly, shake, making sure that all of the issues were taken care of. If there were any issues with the, with the system itself, to actually becoming the administrator for the, the actual billing system. Um, there's a lot of responsibility that's involved there that, um, Ken might have been doing for quite a while, and hats off to Matt, that he identified that and said, we need to make sure that this is accurately reflected in the job description. And so what I do is I look at the job description and I look at the current salary surveys that, um, Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling, uh, has, in, has purchased, that we can look at what other similar jobs in the market are doing. Uh, this is a unique position, but there was data that I was able to utilize and, uh, use compensation best practices in order to make sure that I felt like the pay and of what I looked at was pretty, pretty close to what I felt like this position should be compensated at. I also worked with Hazel and Pam, and then also had Matt and Paul review my, uh, the, the, the data to make sure that they felt comfortable with my recommendation. And after I do that, I calculate a pay range. So if you want to go to, um, is it just right above that, four point page forty-two? This is the, the pay plan, and you can see highlighted in gray is where that position's range currently is at. Um, my calculations based upon market data brought this position up that's highlighted in yellow. There's a seven point three percent change to, uh, the pay range, which I feel is warranted with the additional duties that, that Ken is performing. Um, and so first of all, the recommendation is to update the pay plan to be able to, um, reflect what this position is truly doing and to also update the job title. Um, in addition to what I do, um, and to stay fair and consistent with what we've done with other positions when we've looked at new market data, we use a compression matrix that the board approved, um, when we went through our phases of, of, of placing people into the pay ranges, especially to help combat compression. If you want to scroll back one more page to page forty-one, this is what that compression matrix looks like. And so what we do is we calculate, um, a total years, uh, in the current position and any prior years of experience or education, and we come up with where that's at. And then we place the, the employee within that new range where it's at. And, um, in this case, when we did that, it did not warrant a pay increase. Um, I know that sounds unusual because there was a seven point three percent increase to the pay range. But where this incumbent fell within the pay range based upon years of experience and education, um, when we placed it within that, it didn't warrant any pay increase. So there is no budget impact to, um, to ma- to making this, uh, this approval with the, with updating the pay plan. Do you want to bring up anything else, Pam or Paul?
No, I, I think you've covered it. But I will say, I mean, I looked at it, it was that we just felt based upon the job duty and skill set required, it didn't need to be classified.
Any questions or comments on this? Job well done. Thank you. Um, if there are no questions or written, the short comments, I'll take a motion. I'm going to approve the reclassification and update the twenty twenty-four pay scale.
Okay.
Motion by Sherry and Mitch, you're second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. That's a lot of work to put that together, but that is nice to know that we're on the day. Four point five town managers report. We've got a great shout-out coming up, um, and some recycling collections reports I love. Financial stewardship and the methodology. Pam?
Thank you, Pam. Sherry, so we can leave back up to four point four or the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Euro K.
Yeah. And local agreement.
Yeah. So I just, on this topic, uh, I am seeking your direction or approval for me to move forward to start negotiations for a new contract with Salt Lake County. And this is where we provide waste and recycling collections for their, um, facilities. So this would be the government center on Twenty First South, library. Uh, you can see the list of their facilities, their DA's office, um, et cetera, um, agency services. And then what I have to the right there is the charges that we have for twenty twenty-four. Um, you, you may recall that we did significant increases for frontload services coming into twenty twenty-four. The U S cities received increases, Salt, Salt Lake County, and the state of Salt Lake as well. And in doing the analysis with the town of Brighton, um, residential agencies, that we are currently, um, meeting on talks with revenues coming in for about a three EBITDA. And that's really where we want to be is government. Um, but going forward to the new agreement, I want to make sure that the county understands, and then we will get with U S cities as well, we need to increase that cost for twenty twenty-five. Most likely, we will need to do that because we're experiencing these costs with fleet, fuel, dump needs, et cetera. So, um, I will work, I will work with my team on what that needs to go to for twenty twenty-five. And in the future, I want to try to build in something so that the county knows what to expect. Um, it's been a little challenging because we've been doing catch-ups, um, and trying to make sure we're making the revenues with the expenditures. And so for the county, if we don't, um, they start their budget season the same time we do. And so the sooner I can get them those costs going forward, then the better, right, they can plan. So the hope is that I can get something built in going forward that escalation that they can budget for. So I'm just seeking your approval. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, concerns. It does help with our economies and our efficiencies of scale. Um, one thing to note and shout out to our operations team is that for their side load pickup in New York City malls as well as the county facilities, we try to get those on the same day that we're in this area for residential collection. Obviously with side loads, we need to help manage those costs.
Comment?
Quick question on that second COVID area, talking about this being a ten-year term that you're looking to renew? Is the current arrangement, has it matured in years?
It has. It was a ten-year with five-year renewal, so two five-year renewals. And I, I would hope to secure that again, um, you know, since it's, it's important to keep these services going. Because we do have trouble with maintenance and integration as well, so we want to try to keep those efficiencies. That's, that would be the hope.
Is there a concern that with ten years being such a long time out and the fluctuations we've seen in gas and the market, is there a concern that that might be too long the contract?
Good question. So in the, um, interlocal that we did with the town of Alphard, just last year coming into twenty twenty-four, we had an escalation each year. We also put in there that if they increase their services, and we have this in the part agreement as well, if they increase it anytime, we'll go to reflect what is in the schedule for any increased dumpster service or disposal service. And then also that we have a minimum of a three percent increase for CPI each year. And if there's a need to have something higher, we still have that ability to go and let them know that we need to higher that three percent. So there's clauses that, and I work with Rachel. Yes.
Um, do you anticipate any problems, uh, negotiating with the county?
I don't, I don't. I don't think so. I think we have a good relationship. Um, you know, after we separated, I worked hard to keep those visions, uh, with the divisions and with the county themselves. So I don't anticipate, um, I also want to start the process early in case they want to go out a bit. I mean, that's their right to do so. I know we go out periodically, um, to make sure we're giving them a good service for the cost that we pay. So they may very well go out a bit and then have faith that they'll come back knowing that we're, we're very efficient, uh, cost of that bit.
Comment? Do you need an approval on this one?
Direction, yes, would be great. I can get directions for the.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve proceeding to collaborate with Salt Lake County with the new interlocal.
Second, okay, we have a, um, a motion to approve by Greg Shelton and second by Emily Gray. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. We'll move on now to the shout-out. Enough.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just to say that we started, uh, Greenway, Curbside Greenway collections, uh, mid-week, uh, mid-March, excuse me. And, uh, we're on our second week coming to do this one for Curbside Greenway subscription. Um, to get into my report, I do want to say congratulations to Junior Vigil. He is our, um, twenty twenty-four National Waste and Recycling, uh, award, Association Award winner. And, uh, he announced this last Thursday in the Employee Recognition. Make sure he got a big shout-out. Uh, Junior has been with us since the office of two thousand and eleven, has won many, um, outstanding and high five awards since being with us. He's also one of the safety heroes, um, has safe vehicle operation. Um, and he definitely has won this, won this honor, excuse me, I may have misheard. And so by tradition and with the board's approval, we started this process back when we started having winners. Is that the district will sponsor Junior and the guests to go to the Waste Expo. This year it's in, uh, Las Vegas. And then we also sponsored for, um, Junior's manager, and that is Fiona. I'm right at the back of the room here. He finally gets to go. He's very excited. Uh, what I mean by that is it's been mainly the waste, uh, equipment operators that fund this work. Nice to have a recycling driver get there. But there's no questions on that. I'll move forward. I'll just note that, yeah, next, next month I will add to the agenda of, uh, resolutions recognized, Junior. So we'll see if you get off this meeting. Great, right. So following up on, um, requirement accounts transferring from Michigan Square to U R S. And I just wanted to give you all an update. I do want to shout out to all Hazel and Matt. Uh, we've been working together to make this process happen. We've had three meetings, uh, group meetings with our employees, starting with the frontline and getting, um, everyone involved in understanding why we are doing this, mainly to save them money, which they have to care about. Um, and then what that means is that we're going to be charged lower fees at U R S, coming out of Michigan Square. And then also at the local, as you know, and government organizations that are going to be managing our account. So maybe a little bit of security there. Um, so the process entails that with the four oh one A that is currently with Michigan Square, that is an automatic merger. So with that, employees don't have to sign anything, you don't have to send any forms, other than I sent the Michigan Square cancellation of our contract with them, and the, the effective date will be May ninth is when they start to liquidate the account from the four oh one A. And then those will automatically be transferred over to U R S. Sounds pretty simple. And it's a two-week process where liquidation gets them secured in the account, send them over wire transfer to U R S. And, um, the, the focus, the boots on the ground at Michigan Square have been really great to work with. Um, David Saunders is the one that's handling the four oh one A merger. And he's sent a test file to U R S already to make sure that he's going to go smoothly. I think the nice thing is that we are not going to be charged any fees for this transfer from Michigan Square. And then we're not being charged any fees from the U R S to make this happen. The four fifty-seven process has been a little more challenging. That's where in the, that's the employees' contribution of point two. And in some cases, employees are contributing more than that, or they may have a loss, so to deal with the four fifty-seven. So that could not be an automatic merger because of that loss feature. So that's where Hazel, Lisa, um, our payroll, HR specialists have been meeting individually with employees to help walk through that process. We all have to fill out and sign a form. But the nice thing is, is that it's been pretty filled out, uh, and we just have places where employees have to fill in their information and sign it. And then I will sign every one of those, and it will get them off to Michigan Square. The conditions with the four fifty-seven is that they'll all start liquidating on May ninth. And then those will be individual checks sent to U R S for each one of us in our account. Um, I think I covered everything. Any questions? All right, please roll them. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
You bet. Uh, last meeting, there was a request from you, the board, to somehow make it more transparent about the seasonal container program and eliminate availability based on staffing, and then also that it's, um, there's no extra charge for that. Um, the best way for us to illustrate that on our bill, um, there was a thought that maybe we put it in the night item part. But there was, um, concern in that when we show the nineteen fifty a month, the quarterly amount of fifty-eight fifty, and then those listed below, there could be the perception of, oh, I'm paying. and then those listed below, there could be the perception of, oh, I'm paying for that. So it might be that entitlements cost. The other thought is if it's in that line item, we do have to pay for additional lines to be added. So we have a section in the, in the comment field that's right next to the line item part that we can add. And in talking with the board officers, this is the way to list the seasonal services. And then right at the top, the container for rest scrap is limited availability is based on zapping level. So just stating right away that it is limited. Then we have the other central leaf bag and just curbside. I'm hoping that that direction is suitable for you all. We, we will all get a bill next month, so you take a look at it. And I'll look at mine closely and make sure we met the bar. Questions or comments on that?
All we can do is try and try and try.
Yeah, I think it's important that we be as transparent as possible. And, and yeah, that seems to be in Haywoodville, one of the feedbacks that I get. I'm paying for this. Why don't I get it every, every year? And so I don't, I think this might help that, help provide some clarity of how the program works and it's worked and is funded. So thank you. And I'm really interested in any of the feedback that you should get from your residents on that. Any comments?
I do have one more comment. As I woke up at 3:00 a.m. this morning because I realized I didn't get on at midnight. The schedule is contained from my. Different awakening thought. I was like, oh, no. And so I got online and Friday, we, we have seven days. And this is something that I did not realize because I haven't reserved the containers since 2020. And we didn't have this sophisticated system. So I went online tonight, I've got seven days. It's from seven days. Before it was like, here's your container, you get one day, here you go. I just wanted to share that because it was one of those awakening thoughts of, wow, seven days. Now Fridays are all gone, but there's still, and right now I checked, I, I still have the thought of two more days. But my, my neighbors have reserved, so I don't want to overdo it for our neighborhood. I don't want to have empty containers.
No, next time we, you have to all look at 3:00 a.m. and.
Get online? Yeah. Close the times of every change we've made in the scrap program, just how it is, you're never going to make everyone happy. No.
I know at one point we talked about changing the contract to, because it was very, of course, people to be very selfish because it's parked in the driveway and the liability. Did we ever get anywhere with changing that garbage to help encourage neighbors to use their neighbors?
We, we say share, we ask share if you can, but it really, again, it's up to the individual.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. I know, I think, I feel lucky because we're kind of in a horseshoe off the beaten path. And in my neighborhood in Del Creek, Millbooth, as I call it, on the western side. And we did, we talk to each other, we work, we help each other out and just make sure that our needs are taken care of.
But the agreement itself remains unchanged. It holds the reservation, the person making reservation liable before, if something, if there's something in there that's restricted.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of.
Yeah, I just am curious because I know we, we did bring it up and I just can't remember change was, if anything.
Greg, you said an interesting comment, that the person that has the container is liable for what goes in that container. And we know that, but we ever enforced it, and we ever enforced it. And Deonee, do you want to test the new, put it in the driveway?
The only thing that's been forced there is it's over a little bit. Because as far as, I didn't say that it's not being on the daily.
Okay. Do you ever run into problems with people getting upset or people pretty, nervous, threatening about that?
Sometimes you do, but it's major because those don't get along.
Bigger problems than you.
Steve down the street.
So Pam, I have a question for you. So was there a reason why you took them off the street? But I mean, because I know a lot of people out by me don't want, don't want these dumpsters in the driveway because now they, that's liability. So if one of the kids find up on there and get hurt now, they feel like the homeowners are liable for, for that dumpsters in their, in their driveway.
Yeah, good question. So the main reason I picked them off the street is the illegal dumping that happens around them. And the number of staff we need to pick up the cement, basically. And that was the thought to have in the driveway. However, if there are cases, and I know in Copperton, they have shared driveways. There's other locations where the driveway is too small. I know Deonee does a great job of working with the homeowners that if one needs to go in front of their home, he still works it out, but they're still liable. And to try to make sure that they're, you know, people don't through the driveline throwing that. I think one of the benefits is, is that before it was 124 containers going around each neighborhood every day, right? And so construction folks, poachers, whatever may say. Yeah, landscapers and construction could follow that schedule. It was posted on our website and they would follow the containers around. And.
And they weren't for that. They were that, like they'd show up and they'd empty the entire trailer of junk and just minutes and be gone.
So it, it did really help with the illegal dumping. I think we've seen very little of that with the containers.
Okay, great question. Really good question. Our, we get that a lot from residents. Why did I answer that? Financial stewardship using the price and proximity methodology, lots more fun with numbers.
Yeah, I'm going to jump back to the environmental. And Madam Chair, you're doing a great job moving it to walk.
This is record time, I'll tell you.
I don't mean to do that.
Yeah, well, good, good. Because I was honestly a little worried that we need to go long.
You tick?
Yeah. Totally, I apologize. So I apologize. Okay. I asked Deonee and McKenna to dive into the recycling collection. As we all know, since 2019, 2020, we've seen a decline in the tonnage on an annual basis. So I asked to, to dive in, you know, has the tons per home gone down, pounds per home gone down? You know, what does it mean on an annual basis? And what really is significant, what is not? So there's been questions from you as a board. It's part of the decline, less contamination. So I, we have a stat down at the bottom to talk about the annual contamination and how that's come down over the years. And it's still coming down. You know, the 25% in 2023, obviously is better than 30, but we also want to get that lower down underneath 20. I understand that's an average district wide. There are some areas that are, you know, 18% as far as the contamination rate, or even lower than that, and others that are higher. So Deonee and McKenna target education for those areas that may need more education. The other question was, and then let me just jump back up. On the annual terms that have come down, you're looking at 2,100 from 2019 to the last year. But the terms for home is, you know, I, I'm going to look at it in pounds, so 62 pounds left for home. Then looking at the commodities that are in that can. There was a time, and I think it was right around 2018, 2019, we heard the term Amazon effect. And what they, what that meant is that we were going to start seeing more cardboard because Amazon would come into town. And boxes were going to be delivered to homes. And, and I think Amazon has gotten more stewardship and looking at the products that they put those deliveries into because they were using big boxes previously for very small items. And now I'm seeing even moving from the bubble wrap to a container or an envelope that is strictly paper so it can go into the recycling can. So I'm really proud of them for making some changes that needed to happen. But with cardboard, you can see that there's 12% more cardboard in the container. And it's hard to get a weight on that if you look at the 12% from 19 to 23. But understanding even when that container or two of the cardboard is broken down and all that means is that you're taking the tape off, you're folding it up, compressing it as best you can and putting it in your can. It takes up space, takes up space in the can, it also takes up space in the truck. So you'll see that there's more load actually that the driveway may need. And part of that is trying to pack on that cardboard. So I did ask the question, you know, are we losing efficiencies? Is that because of efficiencies being lost? And in the analysis that Deonee did, he feels that the, the trucks aren't being filled with capacity. It's not, you know, a partial load. There might be a partial load every now and then recycling off of the processing center. Same garbage, there might be a partial load. I mean, you know, a waste truck can hold up to close to eight tons on one load legally. Every now and then there might be a six. So you can understand, we try to balance that. The managers do a great job, I want to give a shout out to both us and then Deonee to try to maximize the capacity of each truck. It's tricky, and shout out to the drivers. And then do you have a question?
Yeah, do the recycle trucks have a compactor inside?
Yes.
So it gets rid of the air and the dust and it's compressed. Thank you.
And these that are packed on garbage, as you can imagine, that it is recycling. That, that, that blade is going all the time to pack that. So anyway, I just wanted to share that. Some possible process of the decrease is listed down below. Canna recycling, increase of OCC, which is the cardboard, mail packaging, et cetera. And a decrease in additional, we did have a decrease in the traditional recycling cans when we up the fee from three to five. Does that mean that people just really didn't need it? Or does that mean they don't want to pay for it? We don't quite know that yet. And then there's a decrease coming due to the, the decrease in volume, or excuse me, increase in volume. I might have that. So questions or comments on that one?
Thank you. Let's just get information. I think it's really important that that, that cardboard is today as much as, you compress a little feathers, you compress a little now. Not that we recycle feathers.
Yeah, that, that, that.
Our cardboard's an ever-moving target, yes, especially right now in our study.
Okay. Yeah.
Right. Thanks, Madam Chair. Moving on to financial stewardship and a big shout out to our operations team. This is putting to, on paper, so you can see the benefit of the price and proximity methodology. And what I mean by that is we have different, and this is strictly for garbage. And municipal solid waste, MSW, that's the garbage. So the 2024 rates coming into this year, we have transferred at $39 a ton. We may have another increase in July, we're not sure. They have been going up $2 a ton every year for about three, at least three or four years. So we may see another one coming this July. And then the Salt Lake Valley Transfer Station just went up from, from 35 to 37 coming into this year. Salt Lake Valley landfill is the lowest tipping fee at $29 a ton. And that's if we commit 20,001 tons. So if we get over 20,001 tons, we will receive a $29 per ton fee that's up to us. Now, understanding that if we get charged that $29 a ton right in January because we committed. So the landfill's counting on us to make sure that we hit that. If you don't and we are under that, then we would have to make up at the end of the year with a payment. So our team works hard to make sure we don't have to do that, right? We have David Ica and Justin Puck who's over our curbside garbage disposal services. And so anyway, I just wanted to point out the fact that by delivering waste directly to the landfill and not the transfer station, we saved $217,624 in 2023. And that's looking at that difference, it's an $8 per ton difference. If you scroll down this a little bit, Renee, it shows the district map and you see and where your garbage is taken. And so you can see the terms in Magna, it's the most cost effective to take to the Salt Lake Valley landfill. There may be some areas in Haywoodville that go there. I will say that today, we received a call from John Iwanu, who's the manager out at the Salt Lake Valley landfill. And he said, don't come with your garbage collection because it is too much. So we will pay extra to go to the transfer station, but understanding fine and the value is fine. And our drivers are very happy too. They won't have to dig themselves out of a landfill because that does happen. And we're thankful we're not in the dump website collecting garbage today. It's just green filling from the hair and the garbage and it's a big mess. Yeah. So they, the green waste will go directly from the southwest over to the landfill at the Salt Lake Valley to take to the compost center. That hauls cement so they can pull in there easily, drop off the green waste at the compost center, and out they go. The transfer station is about a two-minute turnaround. The landfill is a minimum of five. So you can understand a driver's desire to be going to the landfill, so, excuse me, to the transfer station. We're thankful that they follow this and understand the savings related to it. So I don't know if you have any questions on that, but I just want to shout out to all of you.
I was gonna say, why, why don't I have a question?
And again, Dick, I went in, and where does it go? It's, I'm not in the circle.
You're outside.
It's mainly to the transfer station. Yeah, that, that. Yeah, it's gonna have the circle. And then if you scroll through slightly, I want to show that there's a North Salt Lake area. Newer board members, and then just a refresher for folks that have been with us for a while as board members. There are about 30 homes in the unincorporated North Salt Lake area. And we contract with Salt Lake City to do the curbside because they have about 30 homes in that little pocket out 2,100 west. And I forget the south, there's only 2,000 north, somewhere in there. But anyway, we contract with them, they provide the curbside, and then we provide their area cleanup with the one-time reservation trailer. And so we still bill our residents, they bill theirs, but it's a nice working relationship. That agreement comes, comes up due, I believe, next year. But with the legislation where the unincorporated may automatically go to the nearest city, that agreement may not be needed. Keep an eye on that. And a board member or an asset watching that legislation.
Yeah, because there's quite a few there, we used to do a few, a couple of years ago. We had to let the, probably lose island, all of them, Sam, being things like that.
Please don't, keep an eye on that.
Great. Love these numbers. That's just, that's just bad. Thank you. Okay, unless there is someone here that would like a question, we don't need one today. And we'll go to other board business. Is there anything anyone would like to offer today? Really, you can offer, I won't move on. Okay, requested items for the next board meeting, which is April 22nd. That will be a report on the first quarter financial report and the release of property tax, they'll request from the Salt Lake County Property Tax Committee. And then of course, Pam, you'll have General Manager's report. Unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion for agreement.
We'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both in houses. Thank you for showing, everyone. Have a great night. Have a great night.